Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Happy Tuesday, happy day after Labor Day. Yes, it is Tuesday. It took me a moment to figure it out, but this is, I know for sure, this is Pickup Lines presented by Gomez Law Fights. And we are back with another live episode in beautiful historic scenic downtown San Antonio. For today, we have traveled down to City Hall to speak to one of your elected officials. And a guy that I've gotten to know recently, and he has a pretty cool message to share. So stand by for that. But listen, I've upgraded, okay? I got a slightly higher budget this week, so now I can show you. Instead of just telling you about my sponsors, I can show you Gomez Law Fights. We have Mia's Mexican Grill, Frank Solis and the gang in Hello to the 604 in Bandera. Go out there, check them out. I know, was it Leroy Salazar who watches our show? Was there this weekend, sent me a message and reported that the food was on point. And so thank you to Frank. Don't forget, every Thursday of the year, every Thursday of the year, 25% off for military and veterans at Mia's Mexican Grill. And then also in Hello to Rudy's Flooring and Remodeling. Thank you to Rudy Escavell and his amazing team who have done the floors in my house twice. I've done flooring and other things for friends of mine, good people, good work. And so thank you Rudy's Flooring and Remodeling. Again, maybe next week I'll have them laminated. The budget went up slightly this week, so I can now print out the logos. And of course Gomez Law, our presenting sponsor, the boxing gloves. As long as I'm doing Pickup Lines, the boxing gloves will come with me. So we have Councilman Mark White set to join us here momentarily. District 10, one of the newly elected city council members. And I know you see the city council members, whatever district you live in, and that person represents you, and you see them on TV, or you read about them in the newspaper, and you see them right in the city council doing that work. My idea with this today was to bring in Councilman White and kind of dig a little deeper beyond the surface there and get to know the person. So I'm looking at Councilman, Councilman, Councilman's on the phone. He's talking to his agent, asking for more money. Oh, let me unlock the door. I told you, he wants, he says, "I'm gonna be on Pickup Lines, so I should get a raise." And without further ado, here is, as promised, Councilman in District 10, Mark White.
Thanks for having me.
Great to see. In all my years of being in San Antonio and in the media, I can probably count on one hand the number of times I've been to City Hall. I'm slightly embarrassed by that, but you have a nice setup here.
It is a beautiful new building, you know, that got redone in the last couple of years.
And shaded parking. I mean, Mother Nature providing us with a little shade here, so that's really cool.
You know, just another use of tax payer money, except not with respect to the shade, because those trees have always been here.
Right, okay, good, good. It's great to see you, sir. I know you're a super busy man, and let's just, let's just get it out first and foremost. I've said this publicly, but about three months ago, when I decided to leave the news business, the San Antonio news business, you, if not, if you weren't the first, you were one of the first people to reach out to me.
That's right. I mean, I, you know, you can say a lot of things about me, but one of the things you can't say is that I don't know talent when I see it. And the fact that you were out there, I knew immediately, hey, if I can get him to help us, that'll be a big win.
So I've been very fortunate, and I've said this publicly. I've always had a fascination just doing the morning show for all those years. I interviewed dozens and dozens of elected officials over the years, and I thoroughly enjoyed it, because while I will probably not run for office anytime soon, I am fascinated by the work. No, people, yes, no, people have told me, like, run for city council, to me, run for city council, you should be mayor one day. And I know enough to know that at least right now, I'm probably not the guy. Because working in your office has confirmed everything that I thought I knew about city government. It's a lot harder than it looks, it's probably less glamorous than it looks sometimes. And I wonder if you would tell people, if there were a misconception about being a city councilman, what's the first one that comes to mind?
Well, certainly if you're looking for glamour and 24/7 fun, this is not the place.
And becoming rich.
It is not, it is not the place for you. I'll tell you though, probably the biggest misconception is that people in government just don't care, and that they're in it always to benefit themselves. Because in this building sitting here, we have a city staff that for the most part is really dedicated to benefiting this city.
Right.
And then all of us on council, and again, I'm getting to know my colleagues here, right? It's only been three months.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of folks in there, while I may disagree with them wholeheartedly on a ton of issues, there's a lot of them in there that their heart's in the right spot. They want to do well.
I couldn't agree more, because universally, just, and I've been on the job for, you know, two, three months as well, and everybody you meet, you just get that sense of, okay, forget the politics for a moment, red, blue, you know, liberal, whatever, conservative, Democrat, Republican, that people care. And if you're gonna work in this building, you've got to be wired that way to want to give back to people, and in your case, help constituents.
That's right, because again, nobody's getting rich in here. Nobody's getting to fly to cool places and go to fancy restaurants. It is about trying to make this city better.
Yeah.
And not to sound too campaigny, but that's really why I got into it. And I've been happy to see during these first three months that I think a lot of the folks are the same way.
Indeed. Okay, so District 10 is your area on the map that you were working with. And I wonder now, has the newness worn off? Is the honeymoon period over?
Yeah, I'd say the honeymoon period ended. It probably ended after the first couple of weeks, when I got briefing after briefing and binders this big with all this information I'm supposed to know.
Yeah.
But it's been fun and it's challenging.
Is it what you thought it would be? Are you enjoying it as much as you thought when you ran?
I am enjoying it, and a lot of it is what I thought it would be. You know, I was on city boards before this, so I sort of knew a little bit about what I was getting myself into before getting elected. And you know, it's a job where you have to get along and try to understand the other folks on council, and it's a job where you gotta really dig into the details in terms of policy and what can really move the ball forward. And if you can understand the policy and then find a way to relate to your council colleagues and oftentimes try to compromise, then you can get things done.
Indeed. So that's the idea of what's happening here. But one of the things that fascinates me, and I'm kind of experiencing it myself right now, is the so-called work-life balance.
Yeah.
Where in my case, I get to sleep in a little bit more now and stay up a little bit later at night, spend more time with the kids. You are a father, you are a husband. You are an attorney on top of, oh, by the way, he has a day job. How much did that play into your decision to run? And now three months in, to be able to balance all of that and devote time to your family and your practice and all that, how has that worked for you?
Yeah, so the one thing that I knew at the outset, if I won this race, was I'm not gonna compromise on the family. I got two little girls, as you know, 11 and eight, Ashlyn and Olivia. And my goal every night is to be home for as many dinners as I can and be able to put my two little girls to sleep. That's always gonna be a priority. So figuring out how I have to arrange my schedule in the day to make that happen, you know, that's what we gotta do. In terms of my legal career, well, that's kind of on hold a bit. You know, this is, this is gonna be a sacrifice in terms of, you know, financial income for my family, what I can do on the legal side.
Right.
But that's okay, you know, that's okay. I tell my girls all the time that you gotta look at more than just yourself. You know, my family, we're so lucky, we've been blessed, we have a lot. And so it's important to find your own way to give back. And for me, I think my skillset fits this job, and I'm gonna do the best I can for the city.
Are your girls old enough to understand the concept of city council? Like when you go, you come down here, however many days a week, do they understand all of that?
They just say, "Dad, when are you gonna be president?" And I say...
If you'd like to announce it here, that'd be great, if you wanna...
Well, boy, that race is gonna be interesting next year.
Yeah.
No, they understand, they're starting to have an understanding of government. And you know, I try to get them involved with as much as I can and let them know what we're doing down here.
Yeah.
And you know, they enjoy it, they think it's cool. And when they see my signs on the little District 10 road signs, they love that, and they love being a part of the campaign. So they're, they've taken to it really well.
I always think too, and my wife, and maybe it's TV news people and politicians or elected officials, the spouses are like, just, like that's next level greatness. Because these people are, the people we're married to or significant others sacrifice so much to let you and I do the kinds of things we want to do.
Yeah. You heard of the phrase, "outkicking your coverage"?
Yes, in football, sure.
That, that is...
Or dating, yeah.
That's right. And that's somehow what I did on the dating circuit, to be able to convince my wife to say yes to me. She's great. I mean, you talk about the partner that you want, that's there for you, that's supporting you, that's a great mom to our kids. That's what I'm lucky enough to have. How I talked her into it, you know, I don't know. It was a few margaritas, I think.
Oh, my goodness. Well, hey, it worked out for you. So are you the type of person that when you get home, we're not talking about city council stuff, or do you take it home with you sometimes? At the dinner table?
It's hard not to take it home. I don't mind talking about it a little bit, again, with the kids, to say, "Okay, here's what we're doing today to try to involve them and let them learn." But then it's sort of kid time, you know? I wanna know about school and friends and everything that they're doing. And then once we get them to bed, which is hopefully by nine o'clock, and that just depends on how rowdy they are on that day, then you know, sometimes Lorian and I will talk about what went on during the day. And you know, she really has some good advice sometimes. "Hey, maybe you can approach it like this."
Oh, that's so true. Same with my wife, I mean, that's, there's, there's no question. So you're on the hook for all the career days, I would imagine, at your girl's schools, right?
I'll probably do a few.
You're probably gonna get invited to. Some people may not realize, you grew up in Houston, right?
Born in Houston.
You got here as fast as you could.
As fast as I could, a little over 20 years ago.
Yeah. You went to law school here in San Antonio.
At St. Mary's.
But you did a stint at Wake Forest, and which of course, next to Tim Duncan, you might be one of the more famous alumni of Wake Forest to be in San Antonio. Did you two ever cross paths?
I wish. You know, everybody says, "Oh, you went to Wake, great basketball, right? Tim Duncan, Chris Paul."
Sure.
I was there right in the middle of them. So I never got those great basketball years.
You never overlapped?
We never overlapped. I've had the pleasure of meeting him a couple of times in passing.
Okay.
And obviously very proud that we both went to Wake Forest.
Now, you did not go to Wake Forest for basketball, though?
No, no, I was just a little bit too short, you know? I guess I could've played a point guard, right?
Well, Chris Paul did okay.
That's right, that's right. I'm six feet tall, but Chris Paul, little bit quicker than me, probably a better shot for sure, but I love playing recreationally.
You do like sports, like this is...
I love sports. I love, I tell people all the time, if it wasn't public service, my dream job would be to be in the front office of a professional sports team. Baseball or basketball.
Baseball or basketball. So growing up in Houston, were you like Rockets Astros?
Growing up, I was Rockets Astros, and of course, the Houston Oilers, you know?
Well, I grew up in Victoria, so I mean, I know, the Oilers were my team, till Bud Adams...
Stole them and took them away.
Took them away, yeah. And the Texans are still trying to, I guess, get a new head coach, and hopefully make some noise this year, but...
At some point, the odds are going to have to swing into the Texans' favor.
You would think.
And they're gonna have to, the law of averages is gonna have to play out, and the Texans will be something.
So you went to the Astrodome then? Did you ever get to go to the Astrodome?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's my, look it up online if you need to, the Astrodome, the eighth wonder of the world. So many great memories there.
It's still there.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it's a kind of a shell of what it used to be, but you're right, it's definitely still there, right? And it looks, it's dwarfed by the giant football stadium, what is it now? NRG or whatever they call it now?
It's amazing. You look at them side by side, and the Astrodome that used to be the biggest thing around, it's dwarfed.
Yes.
Can't go in it anymore, but Houston's so sentimental, they don't wanna, they don't wanna do it.
No, they have fought to keep that thing. So since we're on the subject, and this kind of happened by accident, but we're talking about stadiums and major season, everything, do you have any thoughts on kind of what's happening around San Antonio right now and the future of sports and facilities, particularly in the downtown area?
Well, I think it would be great for the city to have a downtown stadium and to have sort of a sports district.
Are you talking about like baseball or Spurs or both?
We just gotta see.
Yeah.
But if you've been to one of those cities, Chicago or Nashville, even some of the smaller cities, Columbus, that have these stadiums downtown, and then they surround it with restaurants and bars and things like that, it's just a bunch of fun. And not only is it a lot of fun, it's an economic driver for that city. And so if we could do something that makes sense financially, I think it'd be great for the city.
I lived in Phoenix for a couple of years, and they had, you know, they had the baseball and basketball downtown, and then in Glendale, they rebuilt everything where the Cardinals play, the Phoenix Coyotes play, to your point, I mean, that's what they, it literally was, when I lived there, it was like fields of emptiness.
Yeah.
And then they built it all up.
It can be a game changer for a city's downtown. And you know, great cities should have great downtowns. And so I'm all for it, if we can do it in a fiscally responsible way.
No, I get it, I get it. The crazy part about that is, is, you know, you talked about campaigning earlier. I mean, I guess soon, assuming you run for reelection, these are two-year terms, which I haven't always understood, the city council, that's maybe a discussion for another time. You're gonna have to start campaigning again soon.
Two-year terms makes it tough, you know, because you just, you get your feet wet in there the first year, you start getting in a rhythm, and then bam, you're back on the campaign trail. But look, I don't, I don't make those rules, you just gotta live by them.
Conversation for another time. This is Pickup Lines, by the way, presented by Gomez Law Firm. We're about halfway home here with the city councilman, Mark White, in District 10. Guy that I've gotten to know and just fascinated again by what you do and the ability to kind of balance it all, and getting back to the fact that here we are at City Hall, and you talked about trying to make things happen, knowing that there are nine other city council members and a mayor in there, and when you might have an idea of something you want, but more than likely, you're not always gonna get everything that you want.
You know, your parents tell you that when you're little, right? When you're three and four, I remember my parents saying, you know, "Mark, I know you want that, but in life, you don't get everything that you want." And that's sure true, as we all know, and it's especially true in here. You know, all these other city council folks and the mayor, they've got their own agendas on what they want to do. And you know, I know what I believe the best path is for District 10 and the city. And so we need to have a discussion, an exchange of ideas, and then say, "Okay, well, maybe we can get you a little of that, and get me a little of this, and in the process, we advance the whole city forward." So that's what we're trying to do.
I mean, campaigning is hard, and I mean, I know you ran for office a few years ago and did not, did not win, correct?
I ran for state representative in 2018 at the last minute and did not win.
Okay, and I'm just wondering, I mean...
Thanks for bringing up those bad memories.
Well, you know, I, listen, it shapes you though, it shapes you. But I'm wondering, that experience, how did it make you a better person? And maybe it's a case of, listen, it wasn't meant to be there, but look where you are now.
You're right, it did, because during that campaign, I did a ton of block walking again, right? Just like this time, I knocked on about 1,100 doors. It was something similar back in, in 2018. And by being out there and listening and talking to people, it makes you a better candidate, because you better understand the issues that folks have, and it causes you to wanna go do some research and figure out how to solve the problems that exist. And so it made me a better candidate in that regard. I also met a bunch of good people during the campaign, who I think really respected the type of campaign that we ran. And so all of that set me up to do this.
Yeah, and the rest is history. If there are young people out there, maybe parents of a youngster who's in school right now, and they are, they would want to pursue or have talked about pursuing a career in public service, elected office, those types of things, if you could speak directly to them, what would you tell them?
I would tell them, number one, make sure you've got a great support system, because you cannot do this without friends and family supporting you. Number two, make sure you got thick skin, because no matter what you do, right? Somebody is going to be upset with you. And three, you've got to be in it for the right reasons. You've got to want to serve the public. I mean, it really is public service, and you've gotta have that desire to make other people's lives better and gain a feeling of fulfillment by doing so.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like a number of current and recent city council members are attorneys.
There are two others on this council.
Manny and Melissa. And I know others that have come before you, but I'm just curious, is that path, being an attorney, those, what you do in a courtroom translates to what you're doing? Is there, is there something there, like a commonality or connection?
I think a little bit, because with attorneys, it's a lot of reading, it's understanding laws and statutes and ordinances, the same stuff that we deal with at City Hall. And so having a legal background can certainly help you with that.
How do you break up, because I know you have to do a lot of reading in the binders and again, the less glamorous stuff. How do you break up the monotony and what do you do for fun? I mean, you talked about sports and the family life, but how on earth do you break that up?
Well, I love to play golf, even though I'm not very good at it, but I don't get out there enough, but I love to golf with friends. I go to a bunch of sporting events for sure. I'm looking forward to the Spurs and Wemby starting up here soon. And it's a lot of kid stuff, right? My oldest daughter loves basketball, so I actually coached her fourth and fifth grade girls' teams the last couple of years. Love that.
Coach White.
That's right. And let me tell you, if you would've told me 10 years ago that I'd be coaching fourth and fifth grade girls' basketball and having so much fun, I wouldn't have believed you. But it was an absolute blast. And my youngest daughter is really into acting. I mean, if you told her she was gonna end up in Hollywood, she would, you know, that's what she wants to do. So I'm constantly getting shows and performances from her, and I love it.
I like it. I'm just trying to visualize you as a basketball coach. Like are you drawing up plays, or, I mean, do you have a coaching, somebody in the coaching world that inspired you?
You know, I grew up, again, in Houston, and I don't know if you remember the coach's name?
Rudy Tomjanovic?
Yeah.
Rudy T.
And remember when the Rockets won the championship one year? He said, "Never underestimate the heart of a champion." That's right. So he, that was great growing up. But then of course, you know, being here in San Antonio, seeing Pop is amazing. But we had a few plays, we had three or four plays, you know, enough that my fourth and fifth graders could execute, and it was all about hustle and never giving up and determination. And I'll tell you what, we had, we had a pretty good team, if I don't say so myself.
Well, I'm thinking back now, because I was in the 90s when the Rockets went back, I think they won back-to-back championships. I mean, some of those battles with David Robinson and the Spurs in the Alamo Dome back then, is it safe to say that you were not a Spurs fan back then?
Well, you know, I was a little 13-year-old, 13-year-old kid growing up in Houston, so I definitely was pulling for the Rockets.
With the Hakeem Olajuwon jersey or whatever you had?
That's right, but you know, times change.
Yeah, yeah.
And here we are now, San Antonio obviously is home. We've been here for 20-plus years. My girls have Spurs stuff in their rooms.
Yeah.
And we're just big, big Spurs fans and looking forward to the Spurs being back on top.
I like their chances, like, and if Coach Pop needs any coaching advice, I mean, you know...
Oh, he knows where to find me.
He knows.
Yeah, come on, Pop, I got some ideas for Wemby.
I love it, I love it. Winding down here a few more minutes with the Councilman, Mark White, in District 10. We'll talk about, I know you and I are gonna be participating in a town hall tomorrow, which I will end with in just a few minutes, but I wonder if you could look into your crystal ball? And again, I know you can't have everything you want, and it takes a village to do all these things. What are some big picture goals for District 10 that you really are passion projects that you'd like to see?
Yeah, so first is safety and security, and as we've talked about in this budget that we're gonna finalize next week, getting a bunch more police in the budget was a priority, so I'm really excited about that. But after that, it's economic development, you know? Up through that northeast corridor, if you know where Morgan's Wonderland is and Crit and all that, that great space in there, there's a lot of room for development. So I wanna see some new businesses get into that area and really bring to life that spot between 410 and 1604 in our district. You know, it's right off of 35. You know, we have just great people in District 10, hardworking folks, and they deserve to have some new life brought to that area there. So we're gonna, we're gonna work on that.
I know, again, you're just a few months into the job, but is there a particular moment, maybe on the campaign trail, a phone call, an interaction, something with a kid, or something where it just made you stop in your tracks and either laugh or just like, just one of those like crazy moments that you'll never forget?
Well, you know, I'll tell you this story that I'll never forget, but I don't know that it's campaign-related.
Okay.
Other than, I came home from block walking one day, and it was right before seven o'clock, and I was tired and sweaty from walking in the heat, and I opened the door, and my oldest daughter comes running up to the door and says, "Hey Dad." And I said, "Whoa," you know, I don't, I don't get greeted like this anymore, you know, like when they were little.
Yes.
And my wife walks up behind my daughter and says, "Mark, why don't you and Ashlyn, you know, take the dogs for a walk and go down the road?" And I said, "What's going on here? You know, bad grade on a test, what is it?" So we get the dogs, and we start walking down the road, and she says, "Dad." So this boy at school told me that he likes me. And I said, "Okay." And I had my wife's voice in my head saying, "Don't overreact." You want, you know, you want your kids to be able to talk to you about these things. And so I said, you know, "Okay, and is he nice, you know? Does he treat you respectfully?" And she said, you know, "Yes, yes." Well, I'm still calling his dad when we get home. And that night, it was funny, you know, because the most excited person in my house was my youngest daughter, and she's, you know, she said, "Oh my God," to her sister, like, "I've seen this on TV, you know, you need, this is what you need to do." And that night, we got the kids to sleep, and I looked at my wife and said, "No, no, you know, I'm not ready for this."
You will never be ready. I have two daughters, two teenagers at home, and you, yes, you will never be ready. Read all the books you want, watch all the videos you want, talk to all the friends you want. You still, in my opinion, will not be ready.
Yeah, you know, they're still, they're still little kids, you know, 11 and eight, and I'll always see them like that, and I'm not ready for the, for the boys to enter the picture.
Just tell them, "I know the police chief, I know the mayor, I can make stuff happen if I have to."
That's right, that's right.
So you're a dad-girl, is like the hashtag or the moniker, like that's you.
Two girls, yeah.
Wrapped around two of your fingers, I'm assuming, just...
I got a whole house of girls, obviously my wife, my two daughters, I got a, I got a girl dog, but we do have one boy dog. So he and I sometimes sit there on the couch watching football, listening to all the madness going on around us, and I swear to you, he just looks at me sometimes, and I just say, "I know, man."
If that dog could talk.
If that dog could talk.
I love it, I love it. All right, last up, rest of the day, what are we, two o'clock on a Tuesday here, coming off a holiday weekend, what else do you have today?
Our next budget briefing starts here in a couple of minutes. So very exciting. And then later today, I'm going to meet with County Commissioner Grant Moody to discuss some things going on in the city and county, including the homeless forum.
Well, yeah, and I didn't mean to make light of, the budget, obviously, it's trillions, billions of dollars that affects everybody, so I do wanna say, it's obviously a big deal and very important, but the monotony, I know budget season is not the most favorite time of the year at City Hall, and I'm pretty sure I can speak for some people on that. But tomorrow, the town hall, the District 10, and I'm happy to moderate that tomorrow, on a very serious topic on homelessness, which really touches, I think we would agree, all 10 districts in San Antonio.
It does, you know, we did a citywide survey a few months ago, and homelessness was easily the top issue in the city. As I tell people, it's a public safety issue, because we heard the stories from our neighbors in the different neighborhoods about, you know, run-ins with folks out there. And it's also an economic development issue, because we've heard about, we've heard about businesses in San Antonio, you know, leaving because of the overcrowding with the homeless. But it's also, it's also a human issue, you know, because there's folks out there that are, that are on the streets that have, you know, either physical issues or mental health issues that certainly need to be helped. So it's a complex problem, but as I tell these folks in City Hall every day, just because we've got these big problems that are tough to solve, it doesn't mean we should run from them. You know, we need to have a clear plan, define exactly what our objective is, and then go about trying to solve it, you know? I think that's what we're here to do.
And everyone's invited tomorrow, you can follow the Meals on Wheels facility in District 10.
On Danbury, at 6:30.
And all the particulars are, if you just wanna follow the Councilman at District 10... And all the particulars are, if you just wanna follow the councilman at District 10 on all the social media platforms, you can find out more about that. But I know you gotta go and do city councilman stuff, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, and thank you for everything you've done for our team and for having me.
Well, again, it's fascinating work, and I, you know, admire, like I said, everybody who takes this line of work. It's just impressive stuff to see. So, there you have it, another episode of Pickup Lines presented by Gomez Law Firm. Until next time, stay cool, San Antonio, and thank you, sir, for your time today, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.